I'm gonna say almost like a visitation here, but yeah, it's good to see everybody this afternoon. And this is our committee as a whole to go over the proposal that's in front of us, that's facing us on tomorrow. I'd like to open up this meeting with the administration and just tell us the reason. I just, let me take that back. Let me start off with Councilman Carroll, then go to the administration. That's the reasons, as versus or ordinance versus a resolution. And then, once we hear from the administration, then we'll hear from the counselors and everything. Councilman Carroll.
Well, the ordinance structure gives us a procedure that is followable with every approach that we take to annexation. It does not give us something that'll be ad hoc one time where we don't perform a certain function or a certain item when we're trying to do annexations in size. The biggest principle is, is that in municipal government, when you deal with people or property, it's normally done in ordinance form and not resolution. In this case, we're dealing with property and people, which sets a governance of ordinance as opposed to resolution. The ordinance itself just simply lines out a procedure and a method that we review what we're bringing in, who we're bringing in, what may not be needed. It gives us the feasibility study, and it gives us a cost accountability study or a cost benefit analysis. And these are things that on every annexation we need. Now, I know that there are smaller annexations that are out there where there may be 10 acres or less, or they may be 100% petitioned into the city, which may have some differing opinions. That's why this past Friday, I've worked probably three hours with some members of the administration and kind of amend some of this so that all those items will be taken into consideration. So what you have before you is, I think, some common ground on an ordinance that we can all live with between the administration and those of us that have sponsored this ordinance itself. And it gives us a good model, a good line, everything that we need in place to follow as we go through the annexation process, whether it be now or 15 years from now. Now granted, there are going to be some annexations where everybody's going to want to hear or see this information, especially if we ever get a chance to go north. And everybody's going to want to see and have and have this information at hand without having to go through and foster it and say, hey, I think we need to do this. But in this case, we'll always have this, and it would be a great roadmap and procedure for us to follow for annexation that we have.
Mr.?
So I just think a couple of quick statements, and I'll turn it over to Ricardo on the legal issues. But I guess the negative side of doing the ordinance in cities is that we're creating law. But I'll warn the annexation process is well grounded in state law on what we actually have to do. As far as creating local laws, like if you're opening the city up to unnecessary litigation, especially to the extent that we're actually agreeing to do all of these things that are being proposed by ordinance. And in addition to it, the ordinance does not address the third party validation. The resolution does. And appropriately addressed that, and that contract will come before the city council for approval as well.
So I understand this, and I think Mr. Linder said it very well when he pointed out, an ordinance is permanent. And if you take five votes to undo it, resolution survives this council. So yeah, there's a number of things that I would say advise against an ordinance. One, because-
Ricardo, if you could go to the mic. Yeah, yeah, if we can get them a mic. Able to hear me? So what I'll say is, so two things. One, ordinance is going to give you a level of permanency. And I think Mr. Linder said that last, on last Tuesday. That's a big difference. The other is a resolution, while not necessary, I understand why you all want it. Understand you all want a process. It gives it to you. But you really want to be careful about putting additional parameters on yourselves. Understand, what you're doing is you're creating, you're creating reins for you all and how you're going to accept annexation, period. When you do that, although you may have the public asking you to do these different things, you're going to get this information anyway. I would vow, I would, I would say about 80% of what you all are talking about is something that we have already shown you in the way of a draft. I mean, the demographics, the numbers, the parameters, outside of the malls information, most of that information, we're going to present to you anyway, and I think each and every one of you have seen that. So you know that's coming. That's not the real problem. The real problem, and when Chief Barber talks about opening yourself up to unnecessary litigation, what you're looking at is by putting additional rails through a permanent ordinance, if you, as a council, misstep on anything after you enact that ordinance, then you risk invalidating, you risk invalidating your annexation. The penalty for that is twofold. One, whatever you've annexed is no longer there. That makes annexation more difficult. Secondly, if you're looking at, if you're looking at whatever taxes you've collected from an area that we have annexed, that we didn't do so in accordance with the ordinance, then that money all has to be paid back. So you don't want to make it easier to undo the annexation that you're trying to go through, whether it be this one or the next one or one after that. And so that's what you run into from a legal standpoint with the permanency. If we're advising you on one way or another, I'd say don't do either. But the resolution at least, at least gives you the parameters that you want to be able to talk about and then backs it out. The other thing is you have to think about historical knowledge. We had the good fortune of having people who've been on this council for a number of years, and you all remember when things are happening. When you don't have that, when you move to councils beyond and there's nobody from this council that's still sitting there, and me and Mr. Linder are not sitting in the same spots we're sitting in, you've got to have somebody that remembers that you got to go back to this ordinance to deal with any one of the annexations. I'm glad to take your questions.
Council?
The ordinance, we all know that the council doesn't have staff or people to form the actions within the ordinance. The ideal situation here is when the council, being the legislative body of the city, has the ability to enact any law. That's our purpose. So the structure of the law has to be followed by the administration being the mayor, because that's the only way the council can function. So once the council puts something into action, you can't state that if the council mistakes during the process, because then the process is deemed to be done by the administration, not the council. So each administration would have the responsibility of following the process to get the adequate information to the council, and not the council have the responsibility of getting it to the administration. So the statement that was made is somewhat misleading.
It, it, so let me clarify something for you all. I, I know we typically work in tandem, but in no way, shape, or form can the mayor direct the council to do anything. The mayor can't direct the council to do anything. Vice versa is true because you're co-equal branches of government. The council cannot direct the mayor or his subordinates to do anything. We have to work in tandem. We have to work together. So the process, of course, would be the process. And so what you're doing is saying, we're going to put these parameters in place. And in order for us to vote for it, we need this information. Doesn't matter if you all get it from a third party, yourselves, or the administration puts it together. But the function of it is gladly we would follow those parameters put in place by you all, because that's the only way we get it done. Understand, if you put those parameters in place, we would do it, but it's, that's a voluntary step forward. No matter what ordinance passes, the administration does not have to adhere to actually doing the work. We will gladly do it, but that is not a mandate. That is not a mandate. What would happen is in order for us to say, hey, we got to have these things on the table, this is what you want, we give it to you because it is a process that the administration and the legislative body have to work through together. We have to, have to absolutely work together. And I understand that, you know, some people may believe differently, but from a legal standpoint, that's not really how it works. We just have to work together to get it done. And I think that's where we're going with the resolution and marrying the two. Putting the parameters that the current ordinance has in place through a resolution and walking through that process, because most of what's in it already, we're going to give you anyway. And if you want the additional information, it's not that, most of it's not that hard to get in the current ordinance or resolution. Some of it doesn't exist. Some of it we can't give. We'll work through that. We have, I think it now, three working drafts of either a resolution or an ordinance. But the administration is in the best position to tell you what it is not able to do versus what it can.
Mr. President, again, may I remind the council that the legislative branch has the ability to enact any law. The only thing is, is that the legislative branch that's on, we can't enforce the law. That's why we have the police, which are under the mayor's, are privy. That's why we have GIS. That's why we have general services. That's why we have all the city departments that we do. So again, to say that it works in tandem is again somewhat misleading when it comes to putting forth law and structure. The only enforcement arm is the administrative enforcement arm, and the only arm of action is that, because they are the activity side of this tandem. So a partnership, yeah, possibly. But in the confines that you're projecting the partnership, I think it's somewhat a little misleading again, because simply put, the administration has to perform those tasks in order for the council to see clearly how to pass the law or how to do an annexation after the fact.
So let me explain something, be point clear, so that nobody thinks it's misleading. The powers of the council are set out in 1144 C 21 specifically. And that last subsection is specifically prohibits any direction, whether it be public or private. The mayor's powers are set out in 1144 C 37, followed by 38 with appointment power. That's it.
And which clearly gives the council the ability to structure law for the city of Mobile, and only the council.
And you know, that's the same thing that I was, had always thought myself, what Councilman Carroll has just stated. Mr. Linder, I mean, I know you, you know, still getting your feet wet, but your interpretation, interpretation on that, I mean.
Mr. Woods is correct that 1144 C 21 of the Zogby Act empowers the council. I would point out that it is not merely enumerated powers. That the powers listed in 1144 C 21 are without limitation on the specific powers given to the council. In other words, there are more residual powers that exist in the council, and the residuum of power in the city of Mobile does belong to the council. The mayor's provisions in the Zogby Act, he has significant and reaching powers, but they are enumerated. So I believe Councilman Carroll is correct when he says the general legislative power of the city exists in the council. And the council, by the Zogby Act, is not allowed to, you cannot direct subordinates of the mayor. You cannot give ordinance to subordinates of the mayor. You can't, as such, give orders to the mayor. However, you can pass legislation that requires the mayor and the departments under the mayor to act.
That's why I kind of figured. Mr. Reynolds?
I'm confused as to why we're talking about this, that, I don't understand why this is pertinent to deciding on an ordinance or a resolution. We certainly have the power to do an ordinance. We certainly have the power to do a resolution. So I don't understand why this is pertinent, part of this conversation. I thought we were going to try to get down to the Xs and Os here.
Well, we are. The pertinence here is that in ordinance, you follow the law. In a resolution, it's, there are sections that if information isn't found or they can't do it in time, they can actually opt not to do if they don't want to do it. So that is why an ordinance here is so important. Now, you may hear that we're gonna do it. We promise to do it. I mean, I can go back to the redistricting plan, plan when we couldn't get a racial polarization study done because there was a tandem back and forth. No, y'all do it. No, we do it. No, y'all do it. This prevents things from like that. Well, well, the conversation that I had, let me say that, where the question was, no, we want the council to do it. Or then the administration should do it. That's the way we're looking at it. But in this case, no, we don't have to. The structure is in place. Now, the ordinance doesn't call out and plainly point to and say it must be done, because in my thinking, I thought that to declare an individual company or ideal would be inappropriate in an ordinance structure itself. Now, if we need to write that sentence in and say, hey, we will have this done with another section, let it so be amended. But yes, you know, ordinance has teeth. Resolution doesn't.
So I'll explain to you, resolution and ordinance are basically the same. Any law or court will tell you, one's permanent, one's not. Now, with the, with the expressed function of telling you all, there is in no way, shape, or form, you can compel through an ordinance or a resolution, subordinates of the mayor to act. That's what I'm pointing out. It's, you can't compel them to act, nor can you direct the mayor to make them act. And I'm pointing this out only because even if you pass this, what we're going to do is try to work with you and walk through it. But one doesn't make a difference or the other. You don't, you're not compelling anyone to act. But you're, and what Mr. Linder said is, your powers are enumerated and vast. However, they are limited when it comes to being able to direct one way or another. And understand this, it doesn't matter, it doesn't matter one way or another if you're trying to, if you're trying to compel anyone to do anything other than the information you're asking for.
Mr. Daze?
The only person that the council has the power to direct or gets, have something done in the city is the mayor. And that is the whole reason why, and that's the whole structure of the Zogby Act. So I think, again, the senate structure there is somewhat misleading. The council by ordinance or resolution or however, has that power, not over anybody else, but only one individual.
So that's completely in hold, inactive, folks?
Yeah, Mr. Daze to Mr. Reynolds.
Okay, I'm, you know, I'm with Mr. Reynolds on this. I think what we're talking about is a tempest in a teapot, about whether it's an ordinance or a, or a resolution. Let's say we, let's say we do it by ordinance. We have no power to compel the mayor. We can pass all the laws we want, but we have no power to compel the mayor to do anything. Now, in the last, the last time around, the council got into a, into an argument with the mayor that ended up with, in court with, with kind of the same issue, whether the council could compel the mayor to do something, and that went nowhere. So to me, there's no, there, I mean, I don't see, again, I don't see why we're arguing about this. In either case, in either case, we're requesting information that, that is appropriate to have in order to make a decision with respect to any annexation. And then, as a practical matter, as a practical matter, whatever information we request, if we make, if it's clear that it's a condition to getting five votes on annexation, then we're going to get the information.
Correct.
So I, I think we're, I think we're spending a lot of time arguing over something that in the end, doesn't make that much difference.
Mr. Reynolds to Ms. Gregory.
Well, before he gets into it, because Ben may have more to say than I do, but Joel said exactly what I'm thinking too. At the end of the day, in order to get an annexation proposal on our desk that five people will vote for, we must have the information we request. Otherwise, it goes nowhere, and there is no referendum. There is no annexation, period.
And you all have the power to request the information? That is, that is a new-
Well, the information is requested in the resolution, and it basically mirrors what is in the ordinance. But at the end of the day, if that information that we request as a council is not provided, then getting five votes to let anything go forward after that is no avoid. It's not, it won't happen.
And at the end of the day, we don't have the power to compel the mayor.
Well, true.
We couldn't compel him to get raises. We couldn't compel him to do other things that we, you know, approved.
It's Mr. Reynolds. I'm going to talk after Mr. Reynolds.
But in this case, we don't have to compel. That's the whole thing is, it's unnecessary to compel anybody to do anything. It's, it's very straightforward and simple that this council has identified priorities by way of Mr. Carroll's introduction of an ordinance that says, these are the things that are important to me and the sponsors of it. And then we had a discussion on it. Everybody generally agrees that, you know what, that's good information to have. Let's get that information so that we can make a good, sound decision on annexation. And then, so we're all in agreement of what we're wanting. Generally, I've got some things in here that I think are not all that clear. So I don't see why we can't move forward without creating implications for future citizens of the city that are unnecessary to address this short-term issue we have. We shouldn't restrict our power or restrict the people's ability to intervene or interject into their government by saying, maybe a future council doesn't have quite the same view as ours, and maybe they want to do something quicker or in a different way or whatever. They're not bound by a law that was created for a short-term purpose. We can get this done by resolution and have the very same outcome for this annexation. There's, there's adequate protection in place, you know, that we still have to vote. Is the annexation a resolution or an ordinance?
The annexation itself-
The annexation itself is a resolution.
It's a resolution.
By state law.
And, and if, if a council chose and we said we wanted to just annex an area on our own, I think there's still a portion of the law that requires delivery to the probate judge from the mayor. Is that right? So there's adequate protection there. So I don't know. I think, I think if we can get this wording correct on the resolution, I think there's probably widespread support for that.
Again, hold on, did you finish, Reynolds?
Yes, sir.
I just kind of disturbed this a little bit. Mr. Linder, I keep on saying compel the mayor. If the mayor don't do what the ordinance say do, don't the council can sue the mayor and go to court? I mean, because this, if we have five votes to do it. Now, we don't have five votes. No, I know we can't do it, but isn't that correct?
In the United States, anybody can sue anyone for anything. The question is whether the cause of action ends up being valid and triable to a trier of fact. What I would say, I've got the Zogby Act in front of me. And what it says as to this is, except for the purpose of inquiry, the members of the council shall deal with the administrative service only through the mayor. Members of the council should not give orders to any subordinates of the mayor, either publicly or privately, and violations are punished by not being a councilperson anymore. But, so it's not quite accurate to say the council can order the mayor, but what the council can do with the full vesting of legislative power is it can pass legislation that the, that the, that the mayor and the administration are honor-bound to enforce. And if they were for some reason operating in bad faith, which I'm not saying anybody is or has, but if they're in bad faith or there was, there was a failure to execute faithfully the laws passed by the council, yes, there would be, there could be court proceedings after that. But again, the council can do what it wishes, as long as it has five votes and isn't challenged itself.
And again, I ain't trying to go there, but just remember that I think the law was designed for be a strong counsel, weak marriage situation. So that's why I really just disagreeing, you know, respectfully, Mr. Woods, you know, some of the stuff that-
So it's interesting. I don't think this is the right forum for it, but you should probably talk to the people who wrote it, and they'll tell you the, they'll tell you actually different. But I want to, I want to, Mr. Linder is, Mr. Linder said something that is very correct. What you all have to do, what you all have the right to do, and it's vested in Zogby, is to make inquiry. You're asking for information. That's totally permissible. And the mayor is compelled to give you that information, not through you filing a lawsuit, because that's just how it works. That's what Zogby specifically says. But the counter to that is, that inquiry is a limitation. You can't direct anyone else through ordinance or through resolution to do anything. Inquiry is totally within you all's realm. I mean, you can do that. So what we're seeing is, we shouldn't be arguing about this.
Well-
But we're asking for a resolution as opposed to nothing, because that's a compromise. We would rather stick with state law.
Mr. President?
The council, the council, we have three vested members who've asked for ordinance. Asking for is us to be able to work through to a compromise. We have a resolution that specifically requests certain information so that we can come to the table, get five votes, and have a process. We understand that. We're willing to do that.
Mr. President? When I first introduced this, I suggested that we send it to committee to find some common ground. I think we've kicked this tail a little bit long here. I think it's clear from everybody where the strength in city government lies. At this point in time, we need to find some common ground. If not, we'll be here two hours. So let's, let's move on beyond this right now. I really have a clear understanding of the mayor council, former government, and the Zogby Act. I think some of these guys up here do too. In the ordinance that was given to me that I worked on with Mr. Barber this past Friday, there's a problem. It states that the effective date is 2025. That needs to be changed immediately. It seems like for some unguariness, and it was pushed, it was pushed to 2025.
That's not what it said.
It says 2025, the effective date.
It's not the effective date. It's the sunset date. It's the sunset date. It's not the effective-
Well, we still need to kind of take that, take that away. And the other thing was, is we agreed to the 15 years, but there's no provision in it to say what services we're providing now and the cost of those services now, unless I missed that as I was reading it, because I didn't get it till I was driving across the interstate. So if I, if I missed the sunset, then that's because I was driving. I thought it said effective date. The other thing is, is that it doesn't show what, how much we're spending in those areas at this point in time.
Counsel, what I had just passed out, and that's, you know, we need to-
I don't have what you passed out.
Yeah, I just passed it out. Well, Mr. Linder, he, this is before Mr. Carroll and Mr. Barber, Chief Barber got together. He, our attorney had put together things that he had stated and put into this resolution. Now, what we really need to decide on, counsel, is what we're going to do is pretty much, you know, look at the resolution and look at the ordinance. And again, this was done before Chief Barber and Councilman Carroll had came and put together this order. Mr. Daze?
I have, I have a question. So this, this draft of the ordinance that stated December 19th draft from Flo Kessler, am I to understand that this draft was, was developed as a result of a meeting between Councilman Carroll and Chief of Staff Barber?
Yes.
Okay. And, and that, other than a couple of items you've mentioned?
Yes. Well, he's pointed out that those are correct. I was reading this while I was driving, which I know is really bad, but I missed the sunset clause. I thought it was effective date. I also missed the section that provided the information for right now. He just showed me that it was in there.
Okay, so, so what I understand is that this, this draft right here, the Flo Kessler draft, is, other than the fact that, that it's, it's an ordinance, is acceptable to both the administration and Councilman Carroll. Is that correct?
Yes.
Is that, is that right?
To the extent, for the procedures and the information that's requested, we're okay with that. That's actually-
Yeah, well, well, there's some other things that they, they're not saying. One is that the, this changes and sets it in Chapter Two, Article Four, which is a different place than we had it before, which is probably, according to Flo, is the best landing place for this because of that section handles these- because of that section handles these, administration. So that is also different. So that's where this lies as opposed to lying in Chapter One and being Article Three. The others, you're familiar with.
Okay, so, so again, my understanding is that this Flo Kessler draft, as far as substance of it, is acceptable to both the administration and Councilman Carroll.
To, to the extent of the study that, that's required of the admin. If you remember when the first ordinance came out, there were sections of it that we could not have complied with or didn't exist.
I thought we took those out.
That's the purpose of this meeting, was to strike those, those particular items.
But they're out of this, right?
That's correct.
Okay, so, 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 yeah, so my, so what we're down to, if, if we take, if we take the, the substance, the, and really, substance is the wrong word. But, but if we, if we take the body of this, which is apparently agreeable to everybody, then the only question we're left with.
Ordinance or resolution.
Is ordinance or resolution.
There, there is one other. The, the resolution includes something, I think that was offered by Councilman Reynolds, amended the original resolution that we proposed to include third-party validation.
Yeah, but that, I, I, in our communications on Friday, and forgive me, because the reason why I said, don't write it in on Fridays, is because I thought it may have been inappropriate to have the named third-party in there, or if we could actually do that. So you're telling me now that we can actually write that in? Flo.
But it, by resolution, yeah, it's not, it's not specific.
We can't. So, but I mean, we can't, you're saying put a professional services contract on the same agenda? Because we can't actually write it into the resolution, right? No, can't write it in the ordinance, can't write it in the resolution, can we? No, I don't think we can.
Normally, the council has a separate resolution for every contract that it approves.
Right.
So if you put that provision, hiring a third-party validator into this resolution, which speaks generally about the kind of information that be included. I mean, you could, you'd have to, you don't want it to have two different subjects.
I understand.
You have to merge it, or you could say, we will hire this, this company, and this company will produce a study, and this study will have these items, or this could be the scope of work. I mean, there are different ways to do it.
Would it be, but it was my understanding, it'd be better to have it as a separate resolution as a part, as a part of being part of this in itself.
Yes.
Bring a little clarity to this. If, if you read Section A, it says, and, and if we were to put a, the actual.
Are you in the resolution?
The resolution, yep. A, item A. If we were to put the, the actual person, it would be in direct contradiction to what Section A says. Section A says that a third-party validation is required. Data produced as a result, the results of this resolution shall require validation by disinterested and qualified third-party consulting entity. The consultant, the consultant shall be selected by the city attorney and legal counsel for the council and subject to the approval of the president. So it's got to go through those steps before we approve it. That's my, that's.
But hold on. The resolution? Well, this is y'all's, isn't it? Y'all haven't. Flo, can we, can we do that? Mike, can we? No, but can we do what his Section A is, is requesting? Can we do that? Can it be written in?
That the, that the identity of the party.
No, 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 no.
Just read what he's saying. Did you write that for him or did he write that?
On this Section A in the resolution, I believe Mr. Reynolds came back to me with some language he wanted and we adapted it.
Okay, so, but can we legally do that? Or if it's not legally worded right, can it be reworded to where it's correct, is the question.
I mean, I believe it's, I believe it, I believe it can be executed as it's written there and it would require for any entity be selected, like I said, between the city attorney, the council attorney, with subject to the president's approval.
Flo, Ricardo, y'all fine? Both sides?
You, you're, you're okay with having that?
Yeah, if you, if he's okay, and if you want to amend the resolution to add it, then I'll fine with it. I mean, the new ordinance would be, I mean, the new resolution would be the body of the ordinance plus his amendment A.
Well, the resolution was never introduced, so this is fresh.
No, there would be a new.
Oh, it was introduced, was it?
But it would be a new resolution with this wording, with your amendment A.
Well, there's some other.
That's correct. But, but what was introduced, there'll be other amended amendments as well.
We would have to vote those down.
That's what I said.
We would have to table the other two and introduce this tomorrow with Amendment A on it, because it would be a totally different structure.
I agree, I think that's the cleanest way to do it, Mr. Carroll. But there are sections in this resolution that I, that Mr. Linder put together for us that I don't understand.
Well.
And maybe some clarity, and it's the same that's in the ordinance.
That body would be this body.
Right, and it was just as confusing in the ordinance as it is in the resolution.
The wording here should be totally different, because that was written between me, Flo and Jim Barber. So the wording you need to look at is here, to make sure the, the amendments you're about to try to make are parallel to what's in here.
I'll, let me, give me a second here to review, to see if they match. I believe they do, Section A.
I want to make one caveat, you can do this, Mr. Linder's correct, and so is Flo. If, as long as you put the contract on the agenda the same day. So you have separate resolution, same day separate.
And that's what we discussed Friday.
Can you, I'm sorry, can you, can you go through that again?
For sure, and I, I, you, so you, you can include this Section A, this third-party validation. Wouldn't suggest it, but you can. But provided that you have a, a contract that goes through the normal contracting process, because that has to be awarded separately. You're not saying who the contractor will be.
That's exactly right, we're not saying who it is.
That there will be one. But what I'm seeing is, what, you, you're not awarding here, but you want, but you want to make sure that you're doing, you're, you have it on the same time, same day.
Why does it have to be on the same day?
Well, because you don't want to appear that your contract, the resolution, I think that's what Mr. Carroll's saying. That's what he's saying, you don't want to make it appear that you're approving the contract on the same day.
But there's no one's name in here.
I know, I know, but still, you, you don't want to make it appear that you're authorizing a contract to be entered into without the public actually seeing the contract. That's, that's our point. You're not authorizing a contract that the public won't see, because think about it. Every contract has to go, okay.
I understand that. I see, I see, I see.
I'm willing to accept the resolution with the body that we agreed to. Now we just have to get everything in it that we want in it. So, you guys go work. Define what?
Those things that, that are, that you're saying have to be in that.
He's got them enumerated.
It's in the.
They're, 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 they're here already.
The draft.
So you don't want a feasibility study?
We, we're going to validate the information.
Well, that's what we were just talking about.
Yeah, right.
There, there's a difference between a validation and feasibility study.
True.
A, a, a big difference.
Just doesn't say anything about.
Right, but he's saying he wants the ordinance language brought into this.
Mr. Daze.
Mr. Reynolds and I discussed the, the wording of this, and the intention was to be someone who would validate the data that was provided by the administration.
Yes.
That, 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 that was, we're not, we're not, excuse me. We're not asking for a third-party to come in here and tell us whether we ought to do the annexation or not. We're asking a third-party to come in and examine the, this data that's been requested from the administration and validate its accuracy. And, and there's an important reason why we're doing this. And I think we all know this, but I think it'd be good to iterate it. I'm about to, I'm, I'm getting there. It's an important, this is, this would be an important decision for the city of Mobile. And there are, there are, there are a unknown number of people out there in the public that are suspicious of this process and would be suspicious of any data that was provided by the administration. And so I think, I think for those purposes, it's very, very important that that data be independently validated by, by a absolutely impartial third-party. It's not going to convince everybody, but there would be some people who would be convinced by that that might not otherwise be convinced.
And I remember Ben was saying that he didn't want somebody's opinion as to whether annexation should go through. Just plain old, here are, here are the facts, read us the facts, and we can look at that. Hopefully, it would be pretty obvious.
But I think Mr. Jones's point is that, as we discussed, taking the ordinance language and putting in the resolution, he's saying in Section B, it says feasibility study. And, and if, if Section A is substituted with Section B here, it's the third-party validation. You interchange the two essentially. Because the, I remember, and this is why I thought it was important to me, the, when we discussed the racial polarization study, if y'all recall, we had a whole committee meeting on the definition of a racial polarization study, you know, what it includes, what it doesn't. And I don't know that we ever fully aligned, but we came up with something. Same thing with a feasibility study, you know, you can kind of define it however you want, and, and you still get those opinions interjected and all of that. The validation may take that away.
But we don't, we don't want, I think, I think we're all agreed on what we want, but, but, but the words are, but the words are not coming to us. We, we really don't want a feasibility study. To me, a feasibility study implies someone's going to tell you whether this is feasible or not. And that's not what we want. We want a third-party validation. We want someone to come in and say, all this data that's been provided by the administration is correct.
Can we just interject A for B?
Just think about it like this. When I was talking to Jim on Friday, you know, to look at, even in this cost-benefit analysis and feasibility, you know, the, the birds eye, what's, what's what I'm looking for, circumference or, or, or circle of influence that would be projected by the annexation, there needs to be a, a true feasibility there, you know. We need to know whether or not our data that is collected is correct and it was collected in, in a manner that is correct. So the only way that you can get that is for an independent feasibility study, for them to actually collect data and not just review our data, because our data may be wrong, and that's why you want a third-party. You want a third-party to be also to run data in parallel, not to just look at our data, because it may be something that we've made a mistake on. So to simply say, third-party validator, to validate data given to them when there may be an error out there also. So there needs to be some way to, a, a accountability of the data at the same time as it, as it's being validated.
Can we expand Section A? If we, if we, there's a way to expand Section A to put what you just said into practice, I think. I don't have any trouble with that, because you're right. But, but also, there is some, a time element. There is the overlap of services that are already being provided by the city. And a lot of this data, no matter what, whether you get a third-party to go dig or not, it has to come from the city anyway.
I, I agree with that, but the, the items you just mentioned are part of this resolution and request. The overlap of services that, that, those are services that are currently being provided.
No, I mean, overlap from if you had a third-party to say, come in and do a, a study at a rate of $100,000 or whatever, to come gather information that the taxpayers already paid for and they're already gathering.
This is like an audit, what we want is audited financial statement.
That's exactly right.
Correct.
We want an audited financial statement, because when the accountants come in and do an audited financial statement, they don't, they don't generate the numbers, they just test the numbers to make sure they're correct. And that's what we want.
Yeah, that's, that's the difference between reviewed and forensics also. So we don't want something that's reviewed again. I mean, there's two differences here. Either it's reviewed or it's accountable. Now, I want it to be accountable and not just something that they're reviewing that we put out there on the paper.
This is not, this is not a compilation, this is an audited financial statement.
And if you know what they're doing, they should be able to get the, the audited information and do the testing so that if you're, if you're looking at the area out there and trying to figure out the revenue base or how much is it going to cost to pick up garbage and trash or whatever, they should be able to take those numbers that the city gives them and run a test and figure out.
I'm back and say that these.
Rather than going out and redoing the entire thing, Scott, sorry.
I made a statement a few weeks ago that still holds true today. The area that we're dealing with is known. The neighborhoods are known, the businesses are known, the boundaries are known. We, we don't need to know if it's, the information that we have is valid, because there's, there's no way that it, it's not going to be valid when you're dealing with brick and mortar structures and you're dealing with residential areas that are already established. There's, there's nothing that's going to change. So that data set is a known entity. Now it's looking at the, the numbers that are there and validating the numbers from the data set provided by the boundaries established. So I, there, I, I get back to, to Joel, I totally agree. A feasibility study is, is it feasible for us to look at this area that is unknown and bring that in? And, and we've already done that, we, we've done that for the last year, that area's been looked at. So it, it's just looking at now, all of the data that the city's put together and validating, is that information that they've compiled, in fact, accurate? Are the revenue numbers accurate? Are the demographics accurate? Because the, the data set, as long as that is the set that we're going to look at when the map hits our desk, and that's up to us. But we're looking at, at finite data, because we know that the whole purpose of the drill that we're going through is twofold. Number one, to bring in additional revenue. And two, to bring us over a 200,000 population threshold. So there's got to be an X that equals that 200,000 and gets us over that, which they've done. So we know what that, that population basis is by the, by the recommended neighborhoods that have been established and, and will be presented to us. We can look at that. And we can look at the demographics from those residential areas that are there. And we can look at the, the revenue that's generated by the businesses that are established or will be going in, you know, over the course of the next few months.
Yeah, I mean, I think one of the bigger questions would be garbage and trash, because, you know, we'll have to provide that, that'll be something extra, you know. And that based on what the revenues coming in are minus, you know, what's going to cost us to do garbage and trash, that sort of thing. They already get fire and police. I mean, you know, a lot of it is already known. We just don't have the exact proposal in front of us so that we can say, yes, your neighborhood is being proposed, and yes, yours is, because we're not quite there yet, but we certainly have some good ideas.
But, and, and back to that point, the administration's already done a lot of that work. And, and it's, again, validating that information that they will have provided to us.
Mr. Carroll. Yeah, Mr. President, this feasibility study was one of the big items that you personally wanted to structure. And are we talking about a structure that you want to see? Or is it foreign from what you were asking?
It's what the citizens was asking for that I represent. And I have.
Same here.
Made clarification to the administration or ask administration. That's one thing that, that was asking, you know, is the benefits of, and I understand what you all are saying. But again, this is what the citizens, you know, that I represent, you know, you know, asking for, is, is it really worthwhile as a, and it's, you know.
CJ, what do they mean by a feasibility study?
I mean, pretty much as far as in the revenue, as far as in, is this actually, you know, it's going to come into the city? Is this actually going to come back into our communities? Is this actually, it's good for the city of Mobile, you know, just to grow it? I mean, some people have suspicion as in, you know, we trying to do something else versus, you know, really looking out for the. you know, we trying to do something else versus, you know, really looking at for the, you know, big picture of Mobile. But we just trying to aim one direction. I'm watching my words, what I say, because I know I'm being recorded.
Yeah.
But are they, are they looking just for information or are they wanting somebody to come in with an opinion?
No, we don't need more just opinion. We need no facts.
I know, but, but y'all, y'all, it seems like, I don't know, it seems like we're all agreed. I don't see that we disagreed on what we want.
So are, are you articulating to the fact that you're okay with the administration's facts and somebody reviewing their facts? Or does it need to be a third-party compilation that's independent?
I prefer someone that's independent, non-biased.
Well, somebody that's independent, not biased to run the test like we do audits. I mean, otherwise you're coming in and redoing all the information, going out and trying to get the same information that the city's already giving and.
And the thing about you still have a trust factor as what the city had presented before, you know, is it true, you know? And that's, and that's.
But how are we going to find an organization that can come in, boots on the ground and try to get all of this extra information? They can't. They have to get it from the city.
Have to get it from the city.
I guess then they need to validate it.
Which is what we just said.
Directly toward Councilman Gregory's comments there. We would have to provide with access to all the databases used in this study or the, the study the administration did, which is not just proprietary databases to the city. They also belong to the county, to the probate court. They, they belong to malls. But we would have to get access to all that. That's how they would actually validate some of that information.
But we could do that.
We can. We're, we're actually agreeing.
Yeah, so.
Okay.
But the other things they would also be able to do in ours, by bringing in a professional third party is really do a projection on revenue growth in the area as well as expenses and things like.
But can they do that based on information gathered from our system without us giving them the numbers?
Yes, they're going, we're going to give them, we would have to give them access to our staff and data.
So, so I, there was two approaches to this. And again, I think we're all on the same page. There is, this just gets down into the, the wording of the resolution we're going to pass. Section A that I introduced identified that disinterested third party and their selection and approval process. And then we have enumerated the data we want them to collect.
Don't go past section A, just.
Okay.
And then, before you go too far, make sure that CJ is one hundred percent.
That's why I'm laying it out. So, oh, so when, when I thought about this section, I, I really thought about it in two ways. It was either this what I actually put down, which was third-party validation required, and then that paragraph. And then I thought, well, maybe there is feasibility study required. Well, let's define feasibility study so we don't find ourselves in the same position. Because I remember that being a, a snag for us during the racial polarization discussion of what is a racial polarization study? One person sees it's this, another person sees it as that. So I think we can arrive at a place that Councilman Small's happy with, Councilman Carroll and everyone else is, is happy with by just defining feasibility study. Kind of setting the guardrails.
Yeah, Chief just, just stated it, so.
Right, so we just need to, I'm, but, but if we pass this as it is, it's not that clear, right?
Take Jimmy's comments and put it in.
What were your comments?
In, in order to.
Access to staff and data.
Access?
Access to staff and data. I mean, we're, we're providing access for the.
That's right, alright.
And, you know, because some of it's US census.
Ben, if you and Michael can get with Jimmy and just work on the exact wording that we need to make it, the feasibility portion of this make sense to everybody and be something we can all support. So that it does what it needs to do. And yes, if we could deliver.
And where, where is that going to go in here?
I would say it's going to be section A or section. B, that's the only place in, in this ordinance data. It's probably just going to take section B from this ordinance, put it into the.
We're going to change the ordinance to a resolution.
Correct.
Right, we'll change the ordinance to a resolution.
And then, and then we're going to add.
We'll add.
Paragraph two A of the resolution, right?
Well.
Something along those lines. Is this my copy, William? This has got your writing on it.
And then, and then down here in two B of the.
Feasibility study.
Of the ordinance. We're going to talk about what a feasibility stuff, study means.
Well, in that same paragraph from two A.
Well, that, and that won't change anything else. It'll leave one through eight. It'll leave the cost benefit. All that stuff stays.
Which I still don't understand the malls thing, but.
Servability that goes to future, of servability that leaves the, with the resolution, the servability probably wouldn't be, wouldn't be needed because you don't really need an escape clause. Is that right?
Yeah, with if it's a resolution, we need the escape.
Yeah, the, the, uh, servability, the repeal and effect, the servability and repeal, you won't need those in the resolution because you don't need an escape clause.
Correct.
So those would strike. Now, the next question is who's going to write this before, uh, five o'clock this afternoon?
We're taking two out.
Well, I, I don't mind it, but we got to circulate it to the council to make sure it's right and administration before. Well, lawyers? Alright.
Alright.
We're all in agreement.
Just, just the wording of the resolutions a little bit differently and kind of combine some things, but.
We're all in agreement here, CJ.
I'm good. Scott?
I'm good.
So we have a, a good look. Anything else?
I commend my colleagues for working together to come to a common solution.
Yes.
So rare occasion we get seven of y'all agree on something.
It's on the sister date. Alright, alright. Mr. Mary, you good? Alright. Meeting adjourned.
I thought we, I thought you canceled, you, you, you canceled that. Your office canceled that meeting. Do we still have that at two o'clock today? I thought, I thought.
What?
Is, is the consultant, is the consultant here?
What?